It's nine o'clock, we'll call the November 13th, 2018 Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order. Roll call will show that all Commissioners are present, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is as above, of the United States of American and through the Constitution of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any doubt. Full presence.
Our first item of business today is the Life Saving Awards, we have Sheriff Don Goodmanson here along with Chief Deputy John Lentz. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairmembers of the Board, we have a really wonderful event planned for you this morning, we have Chief Deputy Lentz and we have Ben Anderson from Parks. This is, I think, the third life-saving event that we've presented at the Board, there've been additional ones that we've done in senior staff or in staff meetings, so we've had some particularly with our correctional officers preventing suicide attempts in the jail, and perhaps in the future you can have one of those come, we also had an officer who saved a person on the street who was trying to commit suicide, and we may have had other ones, so we've had additional in the past year, multiple events, but what we'd like to do is to bring some of the really big ones, so to speak, although each life saved is obviously a big one, but we want to bring some to you, and so this morning, introduce Chief Deputy Lentz who will go through this, and I think you're aware of some of the events here, but this will be a good update for you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Board members, John Lentz, Chief Deputy at the Sheriff's Office. Today we have the distinct honor and privilege to present several life-saving awards, these stem from two separate incidents this summer, the first one on June 21st and the second one on September 15th, both of those events involve near drownings, the one in June of an eight-year-old, now nine, or almost nine into early December here, and the second one who was four at the time and is now five, so I'm going to go through each of these events separately, I'll call them up and award them their life-saving certificates, and we're going to give each of them also a challenge coin from our office. The second event from September also involves several members of the community along with three law enforcement officers, so as part of that, I'll have Chief Bentred with the Wake Park Police Department also presenting life-saving awards to two of his officers. So, the first award or presentation is from June 21st, if I could have Elizabeth Christman, Tori Baker, and Skylar Campa come on up here and stand right here for me, please, and you can face the board for me. So, there's one other member who can't be here, his name is Colby, it's actually Tori's son, Colby moved to Idaho and I didn't think it probably fair to make him come back all the way from Idaho for a challenge coin and some papers, so, but, on June 21st, each of you were at Quarry Park in Stearns County, at approximately 12:45 PM, Elizabeth noticed a young girl in the water at Quarry number 11 who was struggling to swim, she went out to help her but the young girl went underwater before she got to her location. Elizabeth was able to locate her underwater and started bringing her to shore, on her way back in she was assisted by two others, Colby and Tori Baker. Once onshore, Elizabeth, Tori, and Skylar began to assess her condition and provide life-saving measures, Elizabeth and Skylar worked to provide chest compressions and Tori provided rescue breaths, in short order the young girl was breathing again on her own. Thanks to your life-saving efforts, the young girl survived this serious event and ultimately returned home after a brief hospital stay. And I think along with this, you know, it's great that all members of the community did there and the adults stepped forward, but in this instance too, we had a 13-year-old step forward and helped with this rescue. So I will present to each with a life-saving certificate. And they deserve a round of applause. And after this for both groups, we'll just have you step out to the rotunda and we'll grab some group photos which we can get to you as well down the road. All right, the next group is a bit bigger and I'll ask them to come up as well, it's Nathan Sisk, Catherine Bearman, Jason Weber, Jody Orline, and Donald Boxa, I'm not sure if he made it this morning or not, and then along with Officers Aaron Wells, Brent Nyhammer, and Dan Nelson. And Chief Bentred can join the Sheriff over here. All right, again, just to recap, this one involved a four-year-old, is also a near drowning incident, and again, like I said, she's now five, so it was a good incident, so. On September 15th, 2018, each of you were at Quarry Park in Stearns County, at approximately 4:00 PM at Quarry number 11, Nathan became aware of a distraught mother trying to locate her young daughter, Nathan quickly took action and ordered everyone out of the water, he organized those that said they were strong swimmers to begin a search of the water, you directed that search from the dock area. Jason Weber, who was also part of the search, went into the water as he identified himself as a strong swimmer, and began looking for the girl, in approximately a minute he located her in about 10 to 15 feet of water and began bringing her back to shore. While bringing her back to shore, he was assisted onshore by Catherine Bearman, who began to assess her and provide life-saving efforts, she was joined by Jody Orline and Don Boxa, who began providing rescue breaths and CPR to the young girl, Nathan who had been on the dock also came over and eventually took over some chest compressions from Catherine. Each of you continued to provide what care and support you could until officers from the Wake Park Police Department and deputies arrived on scene to assist. The first officers on scene were Wake Park Officers Brent Nyhammer and Dan Nelson, at this point I will let Chief Bentred present some awards to them.
Maybe if I could just add too, that, you know, I would put an incident like this on a short list of calls that really, I think, test officers' ability to manage stress and perform under very difficult situations, to utilize their training in a very professional way, and I suspect most of the people up here, and I know these officers have had kids that probably were at that age at one point, and it just magnifies the professionalism that they displayed in this call, and as far as Wake Park is concerned, I've got a couple of pins for our officers and there'll also be a letter of commendation placed in their personnel files as a result, it was a great collaboration, a great team effort, and I'd like to recognize my officers with a couple of life-saving pins.
As I said, Officers Nyhammer and Nelson were the first ones to arrive on scene and took over care from the community members that had initiated it, Aaron Wells also responded to the call at Quarry number 11 and arrived shortly after the Wake Park officers, on his arrival he observed several people and the Wake Park officers providing medical care to the four-year-old girl, he began assisting those efforts by providing oxygen via a bag valve mask device, if you've never seen that before, that's that bag with little face piece that connects up to the oxygen, you're actually bagging for the victim who can't breathe on their own. Each and every one of you then continued your efforts to help this young girl until she was eventually transported to the hospital by Gold Cross ambulance. Thanks to the efforts of all the community members and the officers, this young girl was able to return home after a short hospital stay of a couple of weeks, without the intervention of both the community members and the officers, the events of that day would have had a much more tragic ending, as certainly would the first incident as well. So with that, we have also life-saving certificates for these folks as well as challenge coins. And for Deputy Wells, then we also have a life-saving certificate which would be part of his file, and the commendation bar which you'll wear on his uniform. All right, that concludes our ceremony here today, but just a couple of closing remarks, in law enforcement we always talk about partnerships between law enforcement and the community, I can't think of a better example than a couple of events like this where, without prompting, without a request, community members step forward in a time of need, provide assistance to fellow members of their community, and assisting also us in law enforcement. We not only rely on both the support of the community, but we also rely on their cooperation, especially in times of need such as this, so I think, again, both of these groups deserve some recognition and some thanks, and it's just a good example to the rest of the members of the community that this is truly a partnership between law enforcement and the folks that we serve, and we can't ask for anything else other than that. Thank you. So, yeah, you folks have a lot of this, we've just got some pictures of you.
Our next item is the Public Access Form, is there anyone that's here for the Public Access Form? Anyone for the Public Access Form? Is there anyone for the Public Access Form? Seeing no one, we're going to go to Item C, which is the Consent Agenda, what are the wishes with the Consent Agenda? It's been moved, is there a second? Been seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Approve. Motion carries. We are up to Item D, Parks, Ben Anderson, the Park Director. I'm going to let you introduce your two guests, I'll let you introduce your two guests.
All right, good morning Commissioners, Ben Anderson's Stearns County Parks Director, and with me today I have Don Primley on the far right here, the President of the Great River Archery Center, and Mike Allen, the Vice President of the Great River Archery Center here as well. Today we are here for the agenda item that concerns authorizing the license use agreement for the use and operation of an indoor archery facility at Mississippi River County Park. Just to give a little background on how this project came about, last fall the Archery Center approached the Parks Department and inquired about the possibility of putting an indoor archery facility up near where the outdoor archery facility is at Mississippi River County Park. Thought it was a good idea, so we had them come to the Park Commission meeting on March 14th, and the Park Commission unanimously voted to support this partnership as well. On April 24th, we brought up the resolution of intent to form a partnership between Stearns County and the Great River Archery Center to the county board, and that resolution was adopted on that day. On October 2nd, the Stearns County Board of Commissioners voted to approve, as recommended by the Stearns County Planning Commission, a request for a conditional use permit submitted by the Great River Archery Center on behalf of Stearns County, and this CUP allows the construction of a newly new community building to be used as an archery center in the residential 10 and 20 zoning districts, which is at Mississippi River County Park just north of So, today, like I said, we're here to seek authorization for a license use agreement for the use and operation of an indoor archery facility at Mississippi River County Park. I just want to go through, and this agreement is located on your packet page 36 is where it starts, and highlight a couple of the items within this agreement, if there's questions that come up, please let me know as we go. Under Section 1A, it says, "The organization," being the Great River Archery Center, "shall pay for and cause construction of the indoor archery facility in accordance with certain plans and specifications as approved by the county." Section 1C, "The organization shall furnish and install all necessary equipment needed to use and operate the indoor archery facility." Under Section 2A, "The organization shall be responsible for the overall operation of the indoor archery facility." Section 2B, "The organization shall plan, market, conduct, and oversee the delivery of archery lessons, open indoor archery shooting times, and tournaments for their members as well as members of the general public." The term of this license agreement shall be for 20 years, and that'll automatically renew unless written notices provided by either entity 180 days prior to that 20-year Section 3C, "The county reserves the right to utilize the indoor archery facility for other county purposes after consultation with the organization regarding to the scheduling, and that is because the organization will be handling the day-to-day scheduling of the operation and maintenance of that facility." Under Section 4, "The maintenance of the facility for A, the organization shall be responsible for all interior and exterior building maintenance and repair, the county agrees to maintain the grounds in the area outside of the building. The organization shall be responsible for any maintenance, repair, or replacement of the equipment that may be required as it relates to the organization's use and operation of the indoor archery facility." Under miscellaneous provisions, Section 5B, "The organization," on packet page 38, the county would like to have a liaison, and the organization has agreed to, or would agree for this license agreement, to allow at least one non-voting county liaison chosen by the Parks Director to attend any board and/or organizational meetings. Under Section 5D, "The organization shall pay the expense of all utilities including heat, water, and electricity used for the building." And then under, just a clause that was written in here, the, under 5F2, "In the event that the organization ceases to exist as an organization," so the key word being "as an organization," so the organization is no longer the Great River Archery Center, completely is disbanded, "the indoor archery facility, building, structures, fixtures, plumbing, interior systems, and improvement as well as the archery-related equipment would be retained by the county." Now, if the archery, if for some reason the archery organization decided that they didn't want to use the building after this 20 years, and they still remained an organization, then the archery equipment would stay with the club for that purpose. At the end of this agreement, if the Board so votes to approve this license use agreement, the next step would be the county would enter into a construction contract. I guess with that quick summary, I would turn it over to Don and Mike for any further comment.
Yes, Mr. Chairmembers.
And Board members, things have moved a little bit slower than I anticipated, but that's working with the government, then we're kind of on a wing and affair anyway because we haven't started the fundraising yet, but we are moving forward, we think it's a good building for the county and for the archery center, and we would like to proceed, and I'm not sure who, if the Parks gets the building design first and then to the Board, or is there someone in the Board that would bring that, we're narrowing it down to two contractors at this point.
Dr. Williams, that's probably me.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you can call that, you can.
Ben, okay. Very good. Any questions?
Mr. Lentz.
In your mind's eye, can you, can you give an estimate of the most successful event you would ever have, how many, 10 breeds would you have? What I'm driving at is, do you have enough parking for this, for a successful event?
According to Joe Lar and to Ben, we do have, we have some overflow areas.
Could you put your mic closer to this?
We do have some parking and some overflow areas that the parking can take place, our largest attended event most likely would be an outdoor event, and that would be held in a different part of the park, you know, like the outdoor 900 state tournament and/or feeder tournaments or 3D tournaments.
Do you have any, Ben, well, not for the big event they would have, but do you have enough hard set supplies?
Yes, there are some areas that there's.
Do know, there's a bigger open field area that if for some reason we needed that overflow, we could utilize that for little larger events.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Lentz.
Like in a city or whatever, they require so many parking stalls per square foot, is that kind of the same concept that applies with this too?
Yes, with the design, yes.
Okay.
And then there'll be also ADA requirements that'll have to be met as well, so, because it is a public building, so.
Okay, thanks.
Who else, otherwise, looking for a motion to?
I apologize, I apologize, I really appreciate the organization.
For stepping up to this opportunity for the greater community, my goodness, it's quite undertaking, and it's in the facility that's going to be used, and with that I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye. Approve, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, Public Works, Jody Teich is here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My, I just faced 43 of your agenda packets, my first item is I'm asking the Board to approve awarding the contract for SAP 073-599-081, and this is a structure replacement along 390th Street in Crane Township, this particular structure goes under both the Township Road and the Mobygon Trail, bids were opened on October 18th, the low bidder was Landwear Construction Incorporated with a bid of $489,855.80. This contract comes through the Highway Department because there are state-town bridge funds involved with it, the Highway Department will provide construction inspection in an effort to save some engineering costs, and obviously because a portion of it will be paid for by the regional rail authority, so I am asking the county board to approve awarding that contract.
So moved, seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor, signify with aye. Approve, motion carries.
My next item is I'm asking the Board to approve and authorize final payment for SP 073-070-016 and 017, and this is a safety project that included ground and wet reflective pavement markings, the contract was paid 90% with Highway Safety Improvement Program funding, and the remaining 10% came from both our state aid construction. 10% came from both our state aid construction and county levy funding. The final contract underran the original bid by $1,862, so I'm asking the board to approve and authorize that final payment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and seconded, discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. Close, motion carries.
For my next item, I'm asking the county board to adopt a resolution designating the intersection of County State Aid Highway 16 and County State Aid Highway 33, a four-way stop. As you may be aware, there was a fatal crash at that intersection last year. We have a history of reported near misses. The two roads have very similar overall traffic counts, average on a daily basis. So in, looking at some options of what we had at this intersection, obviously there were a lot of concerned people, but we looked at a four-way stop being probably the safest and most effective option. So typically, we have the board adopt a resolution, so we have that record, and it makes it easier for enforcement, et cetera. But I'm asking the board to adopt that resolution designating that intersection as a four-way stop.
So move the request with a question.
Move, is there a second?
I'll second with a question.
Mr. Knatch.
So Jody, what, are you going to have, like, reflective stop signs, or flashing ones, or?
What we're going to do is, we're going to have large stop signs, stop-ahead signs placed, we're going to do a news release as soon as we know exactly when that four-way stop will be erected. Obviously, we have locates, et cetera. Typically, we put flags on those stop signs and the stop-aheds when we first put them up, just to make people aware. And to be clear, a four-way stop doesn't prevent people from running stop signs, but the chance that two people will run the stop sign at the exact same time is very minimal, and that's the biggest safety aspect of this. I know there were a lot of demands for LED stop signs along County Road 16. Those don't necessarily work, especially when you have an issue where it's perceived that people are running that stop sign on purpose. If they're seeing the stop sign and just choosing to not stop, this four-way stop is going to help that and be much more effective than those LED stop signs would be. And again, looking at the traffic counts, they're pretty similar, so this seemed, after looking at this, to be the most effective option.
I know, it seems like those reflective strips you put on the police seem to really help, because they really stand out, especially in the evening.
Well, and because this is new, we typically want to draw as much attention to it as we possibly can, and so we would do that, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Persky.
Yeah.
He answered.
Three quarters of my questions.
Which was good, but I did get another question on your, with one of your responses. The running of stop signs, how prevalent is that?
We get near misses reported to us, so although we have not necessarily seen that, or law enforcement, unless they're there to witness it, it's more a matter of what we have reported to us from various people, and the complaints we're getting are not just from one person, it's from multiple people. And particularly since the fatal crash happened at this intersection, those near misses get reported to us a lot more often. Unfortunately, sometimes it takes an incident like that for people to start reporting, that sort of thing.
Just personal experience, I have not seen too many people running stop signs, and I just hope it's not very common.
It certainly depends where you are. If you see traffic around, you look, you don't think you see anything, it's a driver behavior issue that we certainly would like to address. But again, sometimes the four-way stop, all that does is minimizes that possibility that two people are going to be going through that intersection at the exact same time.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
For my miscellaneous, I was asked to provide a brief update on the County Road 4 and 120 roundabout that's scheduled to be constructed next year. Our consultant is working on that design. We have a project management team meeting planned in coordination with a utility meeting for that project the first week of December. At that point, we should have rough construction limits and be able to start that right-of-way acquisition process. There'll be one parcel with a significant amount of right-of-way that's needed, a couple of parcels with some temporary easement, and then some very minor strip purchases for right-of-way, but we are on schedule, and we're moving along. I anticipate that right-of-way acquisition to start probably late December, early January, and then that project would take place next year. And we do plan to close the intersection because the construction goes that much more quickly, so there'll be a detour along County Road 133, Pine Cone Road, and County Road 134 while we close that intersection. And I don't know if there are any more specific questions on it, but that's a brief update of where we are on that project at this point.
Mr. Merrick.
When is the next board action required?
Typically, the next action that would be necessary would be if we needed to utilize eminent domain to purchase that right-of-way, the board has to authorize that. Otherwise, as the plans go through the review process, we would ask the board for permission to advertise for bids.
Okay, the other question I have is not directly, not directly related to this, but as I traveled that road sometime in the last few days on 120, and as you approach 4, off to the right was a utility, one of these orange signs that there's utility work, and that orange sign was in the sightline, so you couldn't see vehicles coming, so I don't know if that's been addressed, but do you want me to take a look at that?
I will take a look at that and then contact the utility company that's doing work just to the northwest of that intersection.
Because as you would look that direction, you couldn't see if the vehicle was coming. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just have a miscellaneous, I have a question.
Okay.
Passing through, like, St. Martin area last Wednesday morning, did they use a different type of material instead of salt and sand?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, it almost looked like a turkey grit or something that was?
It might be a different type of sand that's a little bit more angular, so it sticks a little bit better than our typical winter sand that we would use, but I can certainly look.
I wasn't sure if you were experimenting with something different there.
Mr. Lindsey, do you have a question?
Yeah, just, there's a spring highway ticket?
Yes, typically, I would look to set that date right after the first of the year, and we try to do that in May, so that we can have our road program finalized before our initial budget is submitted in June.
Anyway, I'm trying to think.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
We're up to item F, Environmental Services, here's Shelley Benson and Angie Berg here.
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
Angie Berg is here to go through the first two items, and I do have a couple of miscellaneous for you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our first item, I'm looking to amend a subdivision agreement for the plat of stone made on the lake. As you can see, documented in the board item, you've had previous action on this first in July of 2017, when you approved the final plat, and then again in May of 2018, when the developer requested an amendment to the subdivision agreement to allow an extension on the road improvements. As indicated in the board item, the developer, Ted Stalock, is requesting an additional extension for asphalt in the road due to construction delays, weather delays, and I think he's having a hard time finding someone to do a smaller-scale asphalt project at this time of year, and therefore, he is asking for an extension until July 15th, 2019. I did review the bid from the asphalt company with the county engineer, and so we'll be, we have enough financial guarantee to make sure that if he does not complete the road by July 15th, then we'll have to take the next steps to do it ourselves. With that, recommendation is to either consider approving the subdivision agreement amendment or denying it.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move with a question.
Yes, but move, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Knatch.
So this would just be the, is this the first lot that he's building out?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Knatch, yes, correct. Originally, what he wanted to do is not complete the road until he had one home, the spec home built, because he didn't want to beat the new road up. Well, now, we're so late in the season, it's, we would even have a hard time now finding someone to do it as far as the county goes. But he wants to start digging the foundation, getting the concrete work done on the first house, and the only way to do that is if the board would extend the deadline for the final road improvements until July.
So in reality, it wouldn't affect much, because he still has a lot to do yet moving forward.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Knatch, and he's met all of the other requirements in terms of the sewer system, the water lines, stormwater management, this last piece, in addition to putting no parking signs up, is all that's left.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with a aye. Close, motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is to consider authorizing distribution of the comprehensive plan, RFP. On September 18th, Shelley and I were here pitching the idea of the new comprehensive plan, as was budgeted for 2020, or 2019 and 2020. And so in front of you today is the RFP that we have drafted with Bill Davison, our building for sending the RFP out. I've also met with Ben Anderson, the county administrator, and Jody Tyke to talk about how the transportation section, park section, and other parts of the plan would be integrated. And what we're proposing as far as the timeline would be starting distribution of the RFP in December, conducting interviews in January, and starting shortly after that. We're hoping for approximately one-year project, and we would have an executive board meeting, we would have an executive meeting of the county commissioners, and the planning commission would be basically the citizen, would be the group guiding the comprehensive plan. And so we would come back to you after we've selected a consultant and come up with some ideas on outreach, education, the next steps for all the various public meetings we'll be having.
Mr. Merrick.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the recommended action, which was to authorize distribution of the RFP.
Is there a second?
Second with a concern.
Mr. Persky?
Obviously, you've heard from the townships, there's concern about development and appropriateness of splitting properties and dividing properties and what's appropriate, so I would certainly hopefully have enough input from those townships to hear their concerns.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with a aye. Close, motion carries. And then you said you had some miscellaneous?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of miscellaneous items. We have previously talked about the environmental service fee, and if the county board wants to amend that environmental service fee, that will take a public hearing and a resolution. We still have time. We will be bringing that item forward to you. We brought it in the past, do ask for additional information. We have much of that information, we'll bring that at your next meeting to discuss. It is currently at a rate of $10 and 10% for commercial, and the, there is a possibility of reducing that, and that would be the discussion point, as well as some other ways to utilize those dollars. So that will all be at your next meeting. The Tri-County Solid Waste Commission does have a meeting on Thursday, so if everyone can be there, that would be fantastic. We are looking to talk about...
Egg bags.
What was that?
Egg bags.
Egg bags is one of those that's there as well, but we're also talking about, like, a vision session and some of those kinds of items as well. We are also keeping Commissioner-elect Clark in that loop, so as we move forward, we make sure everybody's participating in that process. So if you could attend on Thursday, it would be greatly appreciated. And those are my two items.
I don't mind where it appears, what time?
I believe it is a 9:00 AM meeting.
9:00.
9:00, at the MTC Building, Normal Tri-County location.
Mr. Merrick.
Yeah, the environmental service fee issue that you talked about, you talked about having a discussion at the next meeting, or?
It will be for discussion, so you guys can determine if you want to set a public hearing to make that change. There's a myriad of options for you. We want to just bring back all of the information you had asked for, so there was a couple of outstanding questions that we had, that we weren't able to get until, well, hopefully this week yet.
The only reason I bring that up, because I heard you say the word "public hearing", and then that raised a question for me, because that's the truth in taxation, you know, the meeting is just before that, so it's at a different time of the day. But if we're only having a discussion, I suppose, it's okay.
Right, so it will be discussion at that meeting, Mr. Chair, and then if you guys determine that you'd want to move forward with a change to that environmental service fee, we would have a, set the public hearing at that point.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to recess the regular county board meeting in order to conduct the human services board meeting, and we have Melissa Huberty here, the human services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'm Melissa Huberty, the Human Services Administrator, and today the Human Services Department has seven consent items, pages 85 through 105, item G1 through G7, and I wanted to make a comment on G3, the Contract for Electronic Home Monitoring Services, and G5, the Contract for Drug and Alcohol Testing, in response to a question from Commissioner Merrick. I wanted to let you know that there are a few other vendors that are available for these services, and we have researched pricing. They are pretty competitive prices, and they have great customer service. However, it has been about five years since we have done that, and so I'd be happy to move forward and look at, look at that issue again, because it has been some time, so. So I'm available for questions on that or any other.
Well, the only question I have is it, is it something that makes sense, you know, to do it now, do research, or are we better off in adopting what you have here and then doing the research for next year? I don't know about timing.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Merrick, I would suggest that we move forward with these contracts at this time, because they are pretty competitive, but that I think it would be worthwhile looking into it that year.
Okay.
Mr. Knatch.
So Melissa, are some of these reimbursables from the clients, too?
We do have a testing, we do have a fee scale for client corrections clients as well, that pay for some of this, yes. I believe that was approved recently as well for...
Any other questions?
With those comments, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. Close, motion carries.
Thank you. I would also, today, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I would like to present information and request approval to apply for state bonding funds to construct a regional crisis center to provide mental health and substance use disorder services. And with me today is Santo Cruz, who's the Executive Director of Government and Community Relations at Centra Care Health, and I also have Pat Moan from our wonderful county attorney's office with me today to present this. You may recall, back in January, all 87 counties did pass a resolution in support of the bonding bill, and actually, it did eventually pass. So the 2018 legislature did appropriate $28.1 million in bond proceeds to the Department of Human Services to establish these regional centers. Eligible applicants is kind of an interesting part of the RFP. The eligible applicants must be public entities to receive the state general obligation bond proceeds, and public ownership can be assured through existing public ownership, purchase, or long-term lease. So toward that end, the county attorneys and designees from the four county area have determined that the Community Mental Health Initiative, which is known as CAMI, we have a joint powers board with the four county area, is eligible to be an applicant to apply for up to $5 million, so each entity can apply for up to $5 million out of that $28.1 million in bonding money. And projects will be selected through a Request for Proposal process, and those proposals are due December 14th, 2018. So in the last six months or so, Benton Sherburne Stearns Wright, Centra Care Health, the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center, we've been meeting pretty regularly. It's a quick turnaround time, when the RFP gets released, there's 90 days to respond, and so we knew that in advance and started meeting some months ago. What we've come, I would like to present what the group has come up with so far. There are, just know that there are many, many details yet to be worked out, but we're requesting approval just to apply for the bonding money at this time. So services at this time, we, in our proposal, is to be provided by the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center and Centra Care Health and other agencies as needed. There's going to be four core services essentially at this site. On the grounds of the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center, it will be a new building. The bonding money can only be used for bricks and mortar, not for services, so it can only be for the building itself. mobile crisis team, and we're really hoping primary care as well. The goals for our plan is to provide sufficient space for the mobile crisis team, provide a drop-in and/or walk-in site for persons experiencing mental health or substance use crisis. Last week, Dr. Lee, who's the Executive Director of the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center, and I did meet with a group of peers. Those are folks who have lived experience, getting feedback from this group about what they would like to see, and any concerns they have with our proposal. They were, at least this is my assessment of the situation, very positive about it. We took in a lot of feedback, and we anticipate getting feedback from family members of folks who have lived experience, as well as we move along in this process. But we're looking at increasing capacity of residential crisis beds, reducing emergency room visits for mental health and detoxification, but as appropriate. We did meet with Sue Abder Holden some weeks back, and got her feedback as well. She's the Executive Director of NAMI Minnesota. And one of the things that we really tried to get feedback from people early on, so we could put it into our proposal, one of the things we're looking at is not necessarily making the primary goal of avoiding emergency room visits, because many times, the emergency room is the appropriate service for folks. So, we want folks to go to the emergency department if that's the right place to be. In our proposal, we're looking at having people served in the right place at the right time, with the right level of service. We're looking at providing a recovery-oriented space that's inviting, and where all needs are met, and provide space for primary care screening, county lickages, and housing resources. We know there's big transportation issues. We're also in conversation with Centra Care and other entities to try to see if we can't help with the transportation issue as well, so. So, I'll tell you the vision. Our vision as a group is to have a comfortable and inviting, recovery-oriented space to welcome members of the community, community entering the building. We want the design to be intentionally non-institutional and very accessible, so low stimulation when you come in, but very warm and inviting, so that folks want to come in. A community member could access health screenings, assessment, and evaluation for mental health and substance use disorders, but after that, it will be determined by the person who needs services and the professionals in this facility. And it could mean that an admission to residential detox beds is appropriate, or residential mental health crisis beds, or, as I said, admission to the emergency room, if that's appropriate. People may be returning home with services, and maybe we would need to deploy the mobile crisis team. So, we're not looking at having a facility where it's just about assessing people and sending them out into the community. We are looking at actually providing the services, and having a very coordinated way of doing the services in a way that's very recovery-oriented, and with a high connection to our medical facilities. We cannot, because the bonding money is a public, must have a public entity to receive the funds and to be an applicant, we cannot just open house in Centra Care Health or another hospital, but we're trying to do basically what the next best thing is, which is to have this close by the hospital, and very connected to the area hospitals, so that we have those warm handoffs happening. So, what's different? We're looking at increasing the number of crisis beds, increasing effectiveness and capacity of our mental health crisis response teams. The potential availability of primary care is really exciting, to have that within crisis services. As you probably know, there's a lot of primary care needs in this population, and we want to have an accessible health and wellness environment, and that was a lot of the feedback some of the peers in the group last week gave us, that they feel they don't, we don't necessarily have in this community, is this really health and wellness focus, that when you walk in, you just feel really good about getting services and getting the services that you need. So, we're looking at having a community gathering space that promotes mental well-being, and a strong connection, as I said, to the local hospitals and medical care. So, in regards to costs, the regional grants will be up to $5 million each, if we're lucky enough to receive these funds, and that is, can be used for all aspects of the planning, development, and construction. And if we do receive the funds, the pre-design and that planning can also be funded into the up to $5 million. We have met with an architect and have gotten into preliminary design of what this facility might look like. We don't want to do a lot of work on it unless we know whether we're getting funds or not, but we have enough to get us going. We got a lot of feedback from the peers about how they, just design-wise, would like it, and we still want to top the family members, too. So, services that would be provided in the building are, all have existing funding streams. Either the counties are already paying for it, or there's Medicaid reimbursement, or other reimbursements that the Mental Health Center or other entities are already paying for, so it's not expected to cost more, unless we're, we do a really good job of opening up access, and then there's just that many more people who come for services, and then we're hoping that if that happens, that we would be actually spending less in other areas, because the warm handoffs are happening from the emergency department, and people are getting served at the, actually getting treatment and served at the right place at the right time, so. So, the next steps are to complete our written proposal, and really dig into more and more details of the services, you know, outlining the services. So, it's a quick turnaround time, even with meeting in the last months. It's a lot. It's a lot of communication we've had with community members, peers, you know, other entities looking for support for our project, and so we're just at the point now where we have just a very preliminary proposal of what we want to do. We also need to estimate the cost of the building, which the architect is now helping us with, so we should have that done by the time the proposal's due in December. And then, we've been obtaining letters of support from agencies, hospitals, counties, and we're hoping to submit the proposal to the Department of Human Services by December 14th, 2018. So, with that, we are available for questions.
Mr. Merrick?
Thank you for the information, and I don't know if you mentioned it in the presentation, but the allocation, the design of the building, and then any funding shortfall, and it's just bricks and mortar, as I was saying. And then, so, if there's a shortfall, if the dollar amount isn't enough, who takes care of that?
We would not, Mr. Chair Commissioner Merrick, we would not be building the building unless it was fully 100% funded, and that is actually an unusual part of this particular RFP. Usually, you have to match the dollars. This is the first time, it's 100% of it gets paid through the bonding money, and we will make sure we stay under whatever the award is, that's what the cost is going to be.
And then, how about the location and design?
That, Mr. Chair Commissioners, that can be back billed to the bonding money, and will be included in our proposal. We haven't done very much design, per se, and thus far, the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center has agreed to cover the cost of it, so if we did not receive the money, they would just, they would just pay for the cost, so there's no cost to the counties.
How about the location? Have you determined a location, or can you talk about that?
Yes. Mr. Chair Commissioners, we have decided on a space that's at the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center location, which is about nine blocks from the St. Cloud Hospital, and the reason we chose that is because we have our, many other core services right there as well, with detox, and the crisis residential beds, and so on and so forth. But in addition to that, we like the location close enough to the hospital that we're hoping to have those warm handoffs, and the Mental Health Center had already, a couple of years ago, done some preliminary work with the land, and had hoped to be building a building anyway, just not for this purpose, so we repurposed it for this, hoping for this.
Thank you.
Mr. Persky?
That was, maybe my question, as far as, is there space there for a new building, opposed, that would be renovating an existing building?
Correct. There, Mr. Chair Commissioner Persky, yes, there is enough space there. They had already done some planning of this building, it's just that now we're redesigning the building for a different purpose than what they had originally. They have a very nice 1970s feel to their buildings.
I know that.
Yes, it's a beautiful 1970s sort of feel when you walk in, and not at all designed for today's services, so.
You got this email from NAMI. NAMI, are you familiar with it?
Yes.
First time I've seen it. But anyway, could you address some of the concerns in there? Just got a couple of them. It says, "At a time when we're trying to integrate healthcare and mental health care, why establish a separate assessment center?"
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I will say that the bonding money appropriated was for a public entity, and therefore, a hospital like Centra Care can't be the, we can't move it in there, even though I would agree with the concept that we want to integrate as much as possible, so we're hoping to do the next best thing, which is be nine blocks away, and hope we do a lot of integration with the medical facilities and care.
Is this going to take care of things that are not being currently taken care of there, or is it just?
Mr. Chair, I represent Centra Care. At any rate, can you hear me okay? Okay. To your earlier question, in addition to the fact that Centra Care as a private entity can't apply for the bond funds, there's also the addition that, I think that some of what the letter you received may not have been exclusively aimed at this particular proposal. There's potentially five of these centers, or six of these centers, that will go around the state. I think some will end up in the metro, hopefully not too many, because there's a lot of infrastructure there for these services already. So, Senator Senjum from down in Rochester was really the driving force behind getting these done. This has been something of a passion project of his for quite a while, trying to get these centers where the need is the greatest, and that's in outstate Minnesota. And so, the thinking was, is that a lot of the testimony that NAMI heard at the legislature was around assessment centers, and kind of assessment centers, and then full stop. And that is not what we're doing, in terms of what we're looking to provide. We're looking to provide preventative care and residential crisis beds. So, I don't, I wouldn't want to say that that letter was a form letter, I just want to say that the concern that we not just do assessment and then hand them off to someplace else, that will not be all we do in this space. We will be providing a continuum of services that are both preventative, and also a, another crisis mental health bed, which I know that NAMI supports. I've had that conversation directly with NAMI about increasing the mental health bed capacity, particularly crisis beds. And will these beds be the answer to the woes of the region? No, they won't, but there's, it's at least an additional resource, and a much-needed one.
And one other question, says many of the services people are talking about providing in these new buildings cannot be built to insurance.
And again, Mr. Chair and members, that is actually a longstanding dialogue between NAMI and its Executive Director, Sue Abder Holden, and the Department of Human Services and the legislature at large. You'll often hear her say, "It doesn't matter unless we can bill for it," and what she means by that is, we can bill Medicaid for it. So, she wants the Medicaid budget, of which I know that you're well aware is a big part of both the state's budget and your local budget, she wants the Medicaid budget to expand its list of billable services to include what she would refer to as mental health parity. Basically, all of the things that someone in mental crisis, or experiencing some kind of mental health need, would be able to draw down their funds the same way they would for a knee replacement, dialysis, you name it. And so, that is more of kind of a high-level policy statement of being able to say, "We want to be able to bill for these things." Now, I think that's a valid concern from her perspective, and I would even agree with it to a large degree in terms of the mental health continuum. What I would say is, Central Minnesota Mental Health Center has a very unique opportunity to actually satisfy some of that concern for all of us concerned. And what that means is, we are building our proposal based upon, I'm going to throw some letters at you right now, a CCBHC model. You don't need to remember it. In fact, if you've already forgotten it, that's just fine. The important part about the CCBHC model is it's being piloted by the federal government to allow, I believe there's seven or nine, I'm not sure which the number is, but seven or nine centers in Minnesota right now are being piloted to build, or to bill Medicaid for both crisis chemical dependency treatment, and crisis mental health treatment, and build that into a single rate, because oftentimes, and you're, I'm sure you're well aware, people don't come with just one problem or the other, they're often co-occurring. Unfortunately, the way the funding is mandated by Washington DC is that you have to be one or the other, and kind of be billed in silos. So, Dr. Lee, who's the Executive Director of the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center, is aware of this. He's applied to be a CCBHC himself, and he believes, and I would agree, that there's a very high likelihood that once that pilot program becomes a program in general, he will be allowed to do a lot of these services, billing and addressing some of that concern of saying, you know, "We don't have to come up with grant funding," or, you know, and find kind of community partnerships, kind of cobbling together sustainability, but actually have some structural sustainability in both the service model and the financial support to it. So, I think that's a valid concern, and I just wanted to give kind of a higher-level picture of what's available and what's going on there.
Thank you. Anyone else? What are we looking for here?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the recommended board action, which is, number one, to request approval to apply for bonding bill funds. Number two, authorize the board chair to sign letters of support, and we have already received the information, so.
Is there a second?
Second second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we'll close the...
Can I see you after the meeting? Thank you.
We're going to now close the Human Services Board meeting, and reconvene the regular county board meeting, and we are to our last item, which is issued by Commissioners. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Nothing.
Mr. Notch?
Nothing.
Mr. Persky?
Just a couple items. I just want to commend the county officials and the election judges throughout the county that did an awesome job with the election. Just looking forward, maybe we should take a look at how effective the eBooks were, and how effective the mail-in ballots were, while we're still thinking about the results and, you know, planning for the 2020 elections. Also, just for some of the folks in some of the communities, as of November 1st, there's no parking on many of the local streets, just the public service announcements, so they avoid that ticket, so between now and, I think, the 1st of April or May, just be careful not to overnight park.
Mr. Merrick?
Happy Thanksgiving.
And Dr. Williams, you have...
Mr. Chair, just a couple of things. I sent you information on what the city of St. Cloud is calling St. Cloud 201, I think, which really appears to be sort of a government day, and if you're interested in attending that, please let me know, and we will have a booth there, and I will plan to attend. Secondly, we are planning to have our session with our area legislators on December 11th, after our board meeting. I already heard back from one that that's a problematic time, but we'll see what we get back from others, see if we need to change, but right now, we're planning on that after our meeting on the 11th. And thirdly, Commissioner-elect Clark is in the audience, and congratulations.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing, this meeting is adjourned.
And thirdly, Commissioner-elect Clark is in the audience, and congratulations.
Anyone else? See nothing?